Okay, six o'clock on Monday, July fourteenth, we have called this meeting to order.
Howser here, Kent.
Here.
Me here, Minke.
Here.
And I thought.
Here.
Williams.
Here.
Young.
Here.
You have four.
Thank you.
I would move to approve the agenda.
I have a motion, a second.
Young will second.
Young.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
I propose. Motion carries. And Jenny, you're up.
Our district mission is to teach all and reach all. Our district vision is that Urbendale will be a school district that brings learning to life for everyone. And our board mission is to partner with stakeholders to teach all and reach all through governance of board policy and operating protocols.
Thank you. And straight into the superintendent's report.
Okay, so under the more you know, I know that there's gonna be, there's eight items that I want to touch on and I want to let people who are listening right now, don't think you have to write everything down. If you go to the video tomorrow, you'll be able to re-listen and I'll put some information again in the board notes that will come out tomorrow morning. The first thing is the facility planning update. At the last meeting, we were asked to add something to the website and I wanted you to know that it is on the website. If you go to quick links and click on construction updates, you'll find some information and we'll continue to add that to the site as it becomes available. There's also an FAQ, frequently asked questions, so anyone that wants to submit additional questions at the bottom of that page, there's a link that you can do that, so we welcome any questions that you might have. Second item is for Parent Square. If you don't already have an activated account with Parent Square, you will need to activate your account so that you can get UCSD news updates and alerts and download the app. You can search for Urbendale in the App Store or Google Play. And on July seventeenth, Karen Akers' parents will receive an email inviting them to activate their account. And all other district parents and UHS students will receive email invites beginning August twelfth. They'll send them to unregistered users periodically through the school year and you can activate your account anytime by going to parentsquare.com/SignIn. Even if you don't activate your account, you're still gonna be able to get the information, but you, having it activated will allow you to put in your preferred language, set your preference for how often you want to receive information. And you can learn more about Parent Square by visiting urbendalschools.com/ParentsSquare. I want to also remind everybody that July twenty-seventh to August third is Family Week, so there's no sports or activities in the district and that's to give students an opportunity to prioritize family and friends and take a rest from sports or activities. So hopefully that's a chance where families can get together, go on vacation and do things that you haven't had time to do. I want to remind everybody, August seventh is the UCSD Resource Fair. It'll be held at the high school starting at twelve o'clock and it'll go through six thirty. There will be a lot of resources there for families. If you have not finished your registration, you can also come there and do it. There'll be information around transportation as well. Speaking of transportation, our deadline for sign up for busing for Karen Akers was July first. All other schools, if you need transportation, the deadline is August first and you need to sign up, even if you had busing last year, you'll still need to sign up. They will take late requests, however, bus routes will already be set, so you might find your student walking a little bit farther to a stop or even having to wait a few days to get routed. So if you are in any of the other schools beside Karen Akers, I encourage you to do that as soon as possible. And you can go onto the district webpage, registration@urbendalschools.com. Another reminder for anyone interested in joining SIAC, that's the School Improvement Advisory Council. Some information was sent out on Facebook and in Parent Square for anyone interested to sign up. The deadline is September first. If you did not see that information, you can send me an email, I'll send you a link to it. But we are looking for more parents and guardians to become part of SIAC. Guide to US UCSD Board meetings. We have a guide, a newly developed and it's gonna be, do we put it out? Not this one, not this one yet. But this helps parents and community members understand how to do public comment. It gives some information on the board. For instance, a quorum is for board members. They're at large, they serve a four-year term, so it's taking some information that we assume a lot of people know, that they may not know, so now this will be an opportunity to put that out in case there's any questions. And then the last thing is a continued push for registration. We are seventy over thirty-two hundred, I think, registrants already, so that's really, really good, but we still have a lot that need to finish registration, so again, we have the Resource Fair, but you can do this in the comfort of your own home. And don't forget kindergarten, open enrollment can do applications by September first. And that's all I have on the more you know, if there's no questions.
Could you share the date for the Resource Fair one more time?
Yep, the Resource Fair is August seventh, from twelve to six thirty at the high school.
Thank you.
Are you ready to go to the next one then?
Yeah, I have the policy update.
So the policy updates, there is a list of policies in item four B under the superintendent update. These are policies that were recommended by IASB, which is the Iowa Association of School Boards, through their legal counsel and consultation with our counsel to make edits to based on new legislation. I do want the board to understand these are not all of the policies, these are just the ones that we can handle at one time because there are a number of policies that have to be updated because laws have changed, so there will be additional policies coming to the next board meeting for a first reading. There is some feedback. If you look in Simbly for those listening at home, I added a supporting document that's called July twenty-twenty-five Policy Feedback as of four PM July fourteenth. This is a list of the feedback that I received through Simbly where community members can go in and click on those policies and then provide comments at the bottom. There were two that came in after that, that I will attach after the meeting so that people can see them and they'll be ready for the public to review as well. I don't know, there's quite a few for me to read every one of these and since they're on for the public. To summarize it, the majority of feedback came through policy six oh three, which is the multicultural gender fair program. We had one piece of feedback on four oh three, recruitment of personnel and one piece on six oh nine, which is health education. So I don't know if the board wants to go through these policy by policy. I'll take your direction on if you want to do questions in order of policy. That might be easier to organize.
Heather, will you just start at the top and go policy by policy?
So policy two eleven is first.
Two eleven also has the requirement that the board be trained and I'm working with, I think you might have seen, and their IASB is working on a training that they can put out in the Board Con in November. But they're also looking at an online component and an in-person, so as soon as I get that, I don't know. Hasn't been made clear for existing board members when you have to have it, but newly elected board members have to have it within, I think it was thirty days of your swearing in.
Four oh three is recruitment of personnel.
So this policy was added to, the only change was to make sure the postings go on Teach Iowa. There was another online program, Iowa, Stephanie, I know you're the only cabinet member here, do you remember what was called Iowa Works? Was that the name?
Yeah, it's on, it's on, it's on the policy.
Oh, is it? Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't have that piece on. That was not efficient. Districts gave a lot of feedback on how inefficient that was and it actually made hiring a lot slower and posting jobs a lot slower, so they're moving back to Teach Iowa, so.
Let me see, four thirty-one is...
This one changed the amount of time. This is a very small edit for the amount of time that training needed to take place for child abuse reporting. The big policy that's going to change is gonna come to you at the next meeting where in one of the standing bills, I believe they call it, that the abuse investigation has changed, so the district no longer will, if someone comes to me and, or to a principal and says, this teacher did X, Y, Z, then usually that would yield a phone call to Lauren. They would take the report, we would get together and figure out from there where to go. Now this is gonna go straight to DHS. How that's gonna happen, we're not a hundred percent sure. They've given an FAQ on their website, but that will be a change. I won't be bringing to you the level one investigators because that will now become in essence, it'll become DHS. So there's more to come. That's why that policy didn't come yet, because I need to get more clarity, so you have all of that when it comes.
Five oh two with attendance requirements.
This, we needed to make the statement that you see in green, notifying families that exemptions from immunization requirements are allowed for medical and religious reasons recognized by the law. We took this information, it's also been added to our registration documents and put on the district website, so that's just a notification for families.
Five oh eight is attendance requirements.
This attendance requirement, you can see in green, there was just a small, there's more to come with attendance, but the piece that's in green just points out that the district records, daily attendance is recorded and our student information system remains on file with permanent records and it's responsibility of the principal to make sure that these reports are filed. So it's just really outlining and clarifying whose responsibility is to take attendance for students.
Five fifty-two, use of personal and electronic devices by students.
So five fifty-two, we had two options when this policy, this is the infamous cell phone policy. We could use the IASB template or the Department of Education template. The Department of Education template was more clear and easier to fill in the information relevant to our school, so there's, this contains everything that's required. And we did have this reviewed by our attorney to make sure we were not missing anything that the Department of Education required because that was where the direction came from. So I, it's completely brand new. We took the high school policy. I say policy, it was a guide, the middle school guide, and we combined them together, working with the deans at all of the schools, the assistant principals and the principals and the information that the student group at the high school came up with and that's what, that's how this policy was drafted. So I can take whatever questions you have about it since it is brand new.
Thanks, everyone. Okay, I'll just go through my list and then maybe that will draw up some more, but, so my questions come from a place of wanting this to be able to be administered clearly, so my first question was about the device turn off because just in my mind, I think most people never turn their devices off and if we set that up for failure first, I was curious on if we put that in just because it's part of a template or if administrators recommended that. I just don't want to start up a policy with, we expect your device to be off and then we know ninety percent of them are not in compliance.
I think the logic in that is, I mean, how many times have we been in a meeting and somebody's phone rings and they go, oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. And we don't want that to happen in class, that disrupts the learning environment. So it, that's where it comes from. Basically, if we don't know they have cell phones, being off is gonna be that, how that works.
So in my mind, like silent would probably work for that, but I understand where that's coming from. Next question on if we're providing one-to-one technology. What are some examples of needing to leave in the caveat for educators seeking approval to use cell phones for part of their documented lesson?
I couldn't, I could think of one thing, just popped into my head from a conversation I had with a teacher that I'm gonna be kind of, sort of teaching with this coming year. And it may not ever happen, but it was an example that came to mind. There's a statistics unit and there's a portion in that unit, that first unit, where they talk about soliciting, getting in groups of two to four and talking to your classmates and asking the specific question that deals with a certain kind of data. And maybe they're gonna say, how, how many, what's your bar on your cell phone, what's your charge? And then they want to come up with, what's the average charge amount that a teenager would have on their phone? Is it necessary? No. So I don't know that that would be something that would be approved, but I can think of that as something that they would want. I think it's pretty limited, but I didn't want to take away a teacher's opportunity because they're gonna think of things that I haven't thought of, so I just wanted to leave that open for them to at least have the opportunity to ask.
Can I jump in here quick?
Hmm.
When I did a couple of visits at Metro West, both times that I was there, students, I believe in math class, were using their phones to program robots. And I don't, they, they had their person, you know, they had their computers, so it must have been a phone-only kind of thing. And Metro West had their phone policy in place, so the teacher was unlocking their pouches so the kids could use it.
Yeah, I don't have any reservation with allowing educators to make requests and things like that. I just keep thinking of will this be applied consistently? Will it be worth having a policy? The more things we think of, which obviously there's legal requirements then too. I'll go to the next one. The next one was, the third and subsequent events is a wide range, which I understand, again, that comes from a place of wanting our administrators and staff to be able to implement what's appropriate, but are we worried about how much that might hinder policy enforcement from building to building or consistency from situation to situation if one scenario involves just another parent contact where another scenario could be suspension or some, there's kind of a big discrepancy there. So what are your thoughts on that?
I think we struggle with that anyway. I think and it, it's not, I'm not looking at that as a fault of administrators. I think a third grader who gets caught the third time with a cell phone is very different than a high school student, a senior who gets caught. Third graders developmentally don't necessarily make the best decisions as what, eight-year-olds or, you know, where high school senior should very well know better. So I don't know that this whole thing is gonna be really tough to implement regardless and to monitor, so I don't want administration to be so tied into things too, where there's a special circumstance, maybe a student has a five oh four or an IEP and there's, there's behavior concerns that might be tied to the defiance that the IEP works through a different way. I don't, I don't know that we can be black and white with anything that we do in the schools, so we left it broad. I think we, we talked in our agenda meeting about some possibilities of what if you made by grade band, maybe there's an elementary, middle, high. I don't know, I'd have to consult with legal to see if that is in the spirit of the law. The policy didn't have a separation, the template, but if that's something we could do, if the board desired me to look into that, I could. But I still don't think you're gonna get a hundred percent if this, then that, just because kids are different, parents are different, teachers are different, situations are never exactly the same. And there is an exception, I mean, if a kid, we all know kids that use the, like Dexcom, different medical devices that go through their phone, those are exceptions that would have to be granted anyway. So there's, there's still gonna be some changes or some differences.
And then the last two I had are just kind of tied into how is this implemented and how much responsibility are we putting on the teachers? So I saw the reteaching as a consequence, so who's responsible for reteaching when a student violates the policy? And it says outside of class or school time. And then same thing with the confiscation, logging and storage. Whose job will that be? Will that be consistent at this elementary versus this secondary school and how do you envision that?
The reteaching is gonna be a combination. I think the classroom teacher has the ability to do some reteaching. I don't want to make their entire day spent around it, but I also don't want counselors to spend their entire day or administrators to spend their entire day trying to figure it out. Ultimately, the administration is gonna have to be that last voice in it. And same thing with the confiscation, they're the ones that take it, they're the ones that are gonna have to have a secure place to lock these things up so that there's nobody gonna be able to access them that shouldn't be able to access them, and I believe they all have some practice already within their offices of locked drawers or cabinets or something that they can be secure in. I, I think it is gonna be a problem because I think they're gonna spend a lot of time on it and parents who get upset because their kid's phone got taken multiple times, it's gonna end up coming over the principal's head, so we're gonna end up dealing with it out here as well. And I wish we didn't have to, but I don't know another solution.
Um, I, I appreciate the questions that Chris had asked and I, I just in that same line of thinking, I, I kind of, there's a few things in here that I think are a little bit great, like, like in the beginning definition, it says the school day is defined by the time between the first bell and the last bell of the day. And then when it goes under general rules, like for elementary, for the K five, it says they're not permitted at all. So does that mean that students at the end of the day can't look to see if they have a text or something from their parents about, because that would imply to me that they can't have it on campus, period. But yet it's defined by saying first bell to last bell. So can an elementary student at the end of the day look at their phone to see if they have a message from a parent about something that maybe needs to change, about where they're going after school? That, you know, I mean, so again, like, well, that's what I'm saying, like, are we setting ourselves up to not be successful with some of those, like, those two things don't seem to align, you know, where the, where middle school, it looks pretty clear. They're not allowed to have them in the school day, but they can have them before or after school. So if, if parents need to send a message, you know, so clarifying some of those things and then I, I heard when you say how this, this policy was created, obviously we're starting with the law or what was given to us as the law and rules of those, but how much have teachers looked at this? Because I really feel like the teachers are the ones that have to reinforce this and it's so important, we've talked about this from the get-go, that it, the highs, obviously the high school policy is gonna look different from an elementary policy and that's, that's okay because it's age-appropriate. But the high school teachers all have to be on board and do the same thing and treat this policy the same way, and so how much buy-in do we have already or how much of a?
We took the high school as the starting point. They had already done that work, so.
The teachers or just that student group?
Both.
Okay.
Both of them had done that work over the last couple of years, so we started there
Okay.
because of that.
Okay.
And there was actually a suggestion to change a couple of things and I, I said no because teachers left for the summer, assuming that what they had already had in place was still gonna be in place, so that wa, that part wasn't changed, that was our starting point. I get what you're saying about the elementary and I remember there being some conversation around not having elementary kids have them at all, but you do have elementary kids who walk. And when they walk out of the building, they should be able to check their phone and see, am I supposed to walk today? Or are they saying, stay, stay at the building, I'm coming to get you? That, that makes sense. I can see if we can clarify with the elementary principals, because they also were part of the input to get each of these grade bands. We defined what the, the day, school day was, we had to define that. So it could have been anything, but the fact that they are talking about these in instructional times, that's why we said start of the day, end of the day. So when they get there, I can't see a reason for them to have a phone, but if they walked and they're waiting outside and they need to text and say, I got here, that makes sense, so I can get that bullet clarified.
Right, just, yeah, because it just says while on campus, so to me, if they're standing outside the door, they're still on campus because they're on school property, so I think we need to clarify that just a little bit so that that doesn't create sticky. So I guess I would just encourage every teacher out there watching, every administrator, every parent out there watching. I, I think, I think we all have seen the research and understand that cell phone use in the classroom is not the best thing, but we all need to get on page with this, so I think, I, I hope all parents will read this policy as well And bring questions to us that they have of what's written, because we all need to support this to make it work for students.
I do think too, we go back to, you know, starting this in the middle school two years ago and then in the high school. And one of the things I really appreciated was some of the flexibility and willingness to listen to the students, particularly at the high school, when they were here at the board meeting. And I think the entire state is facing all of these issues. Obviously. We aren't starting from ground zero, so we have an advantage in that way, but I think emphasizing that we are prepared. To examine some of this if it indeed isn't workable. Kinda like, you know, the attendance thing and that certified mail expense.
Yeah.
There's always unintended consequences. And so I, I, I think emphasizing that we are doing the best that we can to put this into practice. Everyone needs to work together, to your point, but the other reality is this is a work in progress, obviously. And I applaud the people in the district who are out in front of this, um, because we, we're definitely ahead of the game.
And Carissa asked about, um, when would it be necessary and I, I mean, teachers wouldn't be the one necessarily asking for this. Cause we're trying to think of it ahead of time, but the students who go to DMAC have to have their phone to do two-factor authentication. So there's no other way for them to get into some of the classes that they have to take. I don't know if we have any students going to Drake, but I would guess any kind of second, post-secondary institution is gonna have two-factor authentication. So they have to be able to have their phone to do that so that they can get into the coursework that they need. And there's full classes of that. So it's a two-second thing. They, if we're walking through the class thirty minutes into it, they shouldn't be redoing it. I mean, I can't imagine that being a problem, but that's another academic reason that they would have to be able to get into it.
And that one's spelled out in the policy, so I guess my biggest concerns are setting it up to be successful. Like Jenny mentioned, if we have lots of things that we know won't work or. Needing a little bit of maneuvering, I guess, then I worry that the consistency won't be there and then we'll lose the buy-in of the staff and we'll lose the buy-in of parents. And so I think, um, the more clear and consistent and. Take the hard line to start with, but I feel like the more hard line we can be to start with, the easier it is to find those things that we need to make adjustments for. Versus trying to rein things back in if we provide too much range, I guess is where I'm coming from, so.
Jump in and expand on that. I was curious what went into the decision to allow phones during passing periods. So I think that's the time when you probably see the most bullying and the chance to take pictures and spread them around the school. And to carry your phone into the classroom then and finish your thing and then put it away. I just see it as a distraction.
And that's high school only, correct?
It is.
Um, again, back to what the staff had and the student group had already come up with, that was the existing policy or practice. So I think, last time I went to another student meeting, so kids, the kids understand. At least the kids on that group who told me that they've talked to different classes of kids and their connections. They know that if they're like, guys, you, you gotta figure this out, cause they're giving us this privilege, they'll take it all away. And I didn't think it was fair to go zero to sixty without having talked to the staff, talked to that group and figured that. Do we need to make a change? I mean, we can start out and then revisit the policy. It doesn't have to be in stone if the first ninety days of school or the first sixty days of school, we realize there's all these problems. I can always go back to that committee and go back to the teachers and get some more input and figure out, do we need to change it? Or is it the implementation that's the problem? So it, it still can be reviewed at any point.
I just wonder if it would be easier to enforce if it was zero. Like if your phone is off and away in your bag, you're not allowed to take it off. Now you're not chasing people through the halls, you're not. I, I'm just curious if there's other districts locally who have implemented that and we can understand their experiences and learn from them.
And I can touch base with some of them. I think it's a good question. I worry about the feasibility of monitoring that. We, I, I don't know how, cause when the kids are passing, a lot of the times you have a wing of teachers who will go out in the hall to monitor the passing. While the others hang back in their room to get something that needs to be done for the next class and they switch that off and on throughout the time. I, I would not wanna put that burden on the, the few who are actually in the hall, cause that's not, I don't, there's no way they could be. Monitoring all of that.
Well, and I do know that there are teachers, I'm thinking the arts. Directors who will, as they're getting ready to go to competition, hey, if anybody's available, you know, at sixth period, please come down and help us load the trailer in advance. And so there, there are some teachers that, that use electronic communication through approved apps and everything that the district's already using. To put those word, to put those notifications out, so I think.
Like group B and stuff like that?
Yeah, so we'd have to figure out a way to, I mean, we'd have, they'd have to change that, but I do think it's, it's, it's important to recognize that. Teachers do use these tools too to communicate with students and sometimes the only time you can see that is when you're in passing.
And I think it's, when you have, when you have students in class for an hour and a half. But you've said you may look at your phone in between. So you've got, you know, four periods where you can't have it in five minutes passing time. And the other reality, I think that we have to think about what we've put into place for at least three of the classes at the high school. And what they're used to doing. And, and in essence, I really think it's valuable that we were able to work with some of the students and the staff. And not just have to arbitrarily put this in place because it came through in July. And so like they did at Southeast Polk, they called them the night before and said, you can't have any phones. I can't imagine that went over very well.
I know, I've heard a couple of districts have done that and some have said you have to leave them in your car, which. Then I feel like I'm liable if it gets stolen out of your car and I don't want that. I mean, I don't, I don't really care and wouldn't know if it was not off in their backpack. I'm not searching their backpack.
And that's why I brought that up is cause in theory, we shouldn't know. If it's put away and it's silent, we shouldn't know. So then I wondered by having it in the policy, if we're just setting. Eighty percent of the kids up to not be compliant right away from the start.
And that's where just changing that simple word to silent might be easier. But because then.
It's not a distraction, it's not disrupting the environment, but no one's turning them off anyway, so we've already set it up where people are.
I think the whole idea, I'm gonna assume, I don't know Governor Reynolds and I don't know all the legislators. But I'm gonna assume the spirit of this policy is to teach kids how to be appropriate in a learning center. In a, in a learning situation. It would, it would be like, I don't wanna go to a staff meeting as the principal and see half my staff on their phones. Back in the day, it was reading the newspaper, if anybody remembers back in the day where you would have staff members sitting in the back reading the paper. And that was always a conversation, because you're completely disconnected from what's going on in that meeting. So this is just accelerated to device and that's the goal, is to teach the kids that. I don't think any of us wanna be punitive. I don't want responsibility for a thousand-dollar phones. I don't want any of that to be a problem. I don't want a kid walking home. Or a kid that valid, has a valid reason for keeping their phone out, that would be an exception to this. It's just, it's about teaching them that. And that's where we as adults have to model that too. I don't go to a school and hold my phone and walk around and scroll through. Looking at emails and things. I know my secretary knows where I am, there's phones at the school, she can call me. So we, we model that for the kids and we look at it more as a, a learning opportunity and a punitive policy. That's where a lot of people were calling for local control and I felt like we were kind of on the path for that. And this should, that's why I tried to keep it as close as I could, because we were already moving in that direction, so.
And I really appreciate how it's kind of a progression, because I do feel like our high schoolers, our, you know, our seniors, juniors and seniors. You know, when they go off to college, there's nobody telling them they can't or can't have their phone, so that, to learn how to use that well and maybe. To learn how to not be so dependent on your phone, if we can do it in that way, is kind of a nice transition for them as well.
Yeah.
Well, and if they're going directly into the workplace, being on your phone.
Not okay either.
Quick firing.
When I, when I was at ISB and we talked about this, um, Dallas Center Grimes, they were one of the first in the metro to do a hard line. So that'd probably be a good place maybe to check, to see what they've seen, since they've had a full year of having the, the hard line banned. And see where, where they're, where they're ever gonna have to make changes, you know, between the years.
And I think I read something that Hoover had a position that it was specifically their responsibility for that enforcement piece. I don't think it was a principal or a teacher. I think it was, I don't think they hired for it, but I checked with someone who knows, not Chris. I think it was like.
When I was at, uh, Vice President and President, IASB Workshop. They, teachers literally would ask a student one time and if they didn't put it away, then the teacher would pick up their landline and call the office. And somebody from the office would come and take it. Um, so they didn't have to.
Yeah.
Do that, but at the same time, then that's. It's time away from the office, but it, it's still disrupting the class, because. That student's not gonna put their phone away and there's gonna continue to be that cycle until somebody can actually physically get there.
But if we don't enforce the policy, then it's not worth it, the policy.
I'm just saying, it's not maybe necessarily perfect to have to pick up the phone and call somebody else.
Well, I've got some notes on getting some clarification that I can get sent out.
And I think as much as we can do to bring parents in for their support, the better.
And consistency from building to building is a big thing, I think, too.
Okay. Number six oh three, anti-cultural gender fair.
Six oh three?
Yeah, I had them out of order, sorry. I was going to six oh five. Um, this one is, uh, the one we received the comments about and our. Recommendation was to follow IASB and take out the gender identity since it's no longer protected class. And including the race, color, national origin, that was another piece that's not in the IASB policy. There were some questions around whether or not this is a required thing. I did speak with our local council as well as with counsel at IASB on this. And the answer is no, it's not. We, we are, you can put anything you want in policy. You can tell me you wanna add a protection for Republicans, for, uh, blue-eyed kids, for blonde hair, for red. You can put anything you want in there. The problem comes in when somebody says, well, your policy says that you're gonna protect. Kids that have red hair, for example, and that you're not doing that, so then they file a suit with the state. The state's not gonna address it. OCR, ICRC is not gonna address it because it is not a protected class. So we're really opening ourself up to, um, potential legal concerns and potential lawsuits as well. So that is the logic that our attorney has given us as far as being able to, um, keep that in. She's said that it's removing explicit references to gender identity to align with state law. The district can choose to retain these protections as a matter of local policy, but should do so with caution. Because it can create obligations not required by law and offers limited practical benefit since Iowa no longer provides state-level remedies. And it would be similar requests coming for other non-protected, um, traits. So how, how do you pick? If you were to leave it in, knowing that it's not protected, how do you pick when the next person comes and says? Well, you should put this in there and it's also not a protected class. So that's putting the board in a position that you're gonna have to make decisions. It may not. Be something that can be defended legally. So. I don't know what other questions. Those are the, that's the majority. These questions also assume that. These students are no longer protected and that's not the case. The bullying and harassment, which is another policy that's gonna be coming to you, actually opens and expands protection. So there's no, there's nothing that's gonna cease happening when students get bullied or harassed for whatever reason. I'm not gonna tell a principal, well, if they come to you with gender identity, saying that's the reason they're being bullied, just turn them away to go back to class. That's not what we're gonna do. There's still protection for every kid to be in our schools in a safe situation. And if there's ongoing repeated bullying for whatever reason, then there, we're gonna deal with that. So I don't know what people think we're not gonna do because we take the words out. So that's the, the short of it. I don't know what other questions you might have.
From my standpoint, I, I understand all of that, right? And with everything, there is risk whenever we make a policy change. But I, I think. At this particular time, telling people in these groups. That they have been, they have been removed because of who they are from being specifically identified and called out. As people that we value and that we will protect, um, and that we will make sure that they remain safe. I understand there are more policies coming, but I think it sends a very. Bad message to the community, to our students, to our staff, that all of a sudden. Teaching all, reaching all becomes just very, very basic and not, not specific enough. In my view, and from my standpoint, if this is not, if it's not legally required for us to do, I see no reason to make a change. I mean, we're, we have all seen that we can be, that we can have lawsuits filed against us for a variety of different reasons. In the four years and two years that we've been on this board. No, but this isn't gonna stop anybody from suing us or any other district. But I think it sends a very powerful message to our students and our staff about who we are as administrators, as board members. And that we will basically say, well, we're too scared to stand up for you. So we're going to take the safest and easy way out.
I don't want anybody to think I'm afraid to stand up for kids. I'll stand up for kids every day. I, I just feel like we, every November get together and decide as, as a board, you guys appoint the board attorney. We have two firms that we've appointed every year since I've been here and I don't know that you're gonna find other attorneys that are as well-versed in school law. And our school law than what we have. And to not listen to their, um, advice. I mean, you, you're right, you, you don't have to. I just caution, I'm not an attorney. So when I get these, we get a primer a couple of times a year from IASB who has attorneys who work on this with allers and other. School attorney firms and that's where these come from. I don't just write them, because I know they've been vetted already by those people. But it, yes, it is the board's discretion. You can, at the second reading, you can vote down the changes if you want to. That is not something that I can, I just feel like I have to tell you where we stand, because that's what. You're taking the risk and I don't want you to do that blindly. Um, it's a fact, we're, we're stewards of tax dollars. So every lawsuit, every complaint that I spend my time dealing with or that our attorneys spend, that's taxpayer dollars. So I don't know that we have the entire community with the same opinion, so I feel like I just have to let you know that that's where I'm coming from.
Would it be possible to, um, put this on hold until we see the other policy? So we could feel comfortable and confident that it feels like we're protecting all of our students? Cause if you're, cause you're saying there's another policy with.
Yeah, five forty-five is our bullying and harassment policy. There's some tweaks to that as well, but that's the policy that's going to, correct me if I'm wrong. Stephanie, expand the bullying and harassment coverage.
Right.
And it won't have the term gender identity in it either. There were, there were actually a number of policies where gender identity was recommended to be taken out. We didn't even have it in some of the policies. We have it here and we, I believe, had it, five forty-five is bigger, so I can't remember all of it. But that's, that's up to the board. If you wanna say to put this on hold until August eleventh and bring it back with. And not do a second reading on that day, but to do the five forty-five and see that, that's the board's call. Right.
So we wouldn't be able to take action on that tonight. It would need to be voted down at the next meeting.
And then paused until the, okay. So we could do that.
It's a first reading tonight. We're not approving it, so we wouldn't be able to table that.
So in the second paragraph, six oh three. So, in the second paragraph, six oh three, we strike race, color, national origin, et cetera, all the way through. But in the first paragraph, we only strike gender identity.
That would be my question, too.
What the difference is, like, why we wouldn't just leave it at, we're not gonna discriminate, um, in both places?
Um, I, to, to match the IASB policy.
But it seems like they're redundant to start with. And we've eliminated all the categories in the second paragraph, but not the first one.
Right. And the first one, it talks about students will have equal opportunity without discrimination. And the second one is talking about education, programming, and curriculum content, et cetera. And so why are they different? Shouldn't we be treating our students the same as we are, what we're providing to them?
It was not part of their, it wasn't part of their policy guidance. So, I can look into why that was not the case. And al- also, not every single time prior to me coming were our policies so closely mirrored to IASB also. That's why five forty-five is a hard one, because it's kind of a combination of a bunch of, like, IASB may have three different policies. I think attendance is the same way. We have it all in one policy. We have all the legal components of it, but we have it in one policy, so cross-referencing. But I can bring back that information to you next time also.
What happens if we just wipe this out completely?
Um, is, this is a mandatory policy and reflects the educational standards, so we can't wipe out the policy.
Okay.
It came in two thousand seven, the primer from June eighth of twenty-seven.
We know when gender identity was added.
Two thousand seven.
Okay.
Is there one that was written with this originally?
No, this policy existed prior. That's the primer that changed it. So gender identity was not in the original. It got added, and now they said to take it out. If a year they wanna add it back in, then it would be added back in. If the landscape legislatively changes, then we would add it back in.
I know we're not talking about five forty-five now, but in looking at that, do we anticipate the same discussion then? Because it lists all of the protected classes, including gender identity, on five forty-five.
I don't have that one memorized. It's so long.
Yeah, and it's in there multiple times, too.
Yeah.
So it, at a minimum, will make sense for our policies to be in alignment, because it'd be pointless to have.
So I'm gonna propose that we have, have, we have further questions or input. And any person of the public who would like to continue to communicate, that's open.
Yep, it's gonna stay in there.
Um, at this point, we're not deciding tonight. And, um, there's obviously an interesting continued discussion.
And I will find out why, the two paragraphs.
Thanks, I'm with you. Let's just end it. Students will have equal opportunity for quality education without discrimination.
Right.
It covers everybody.
Everybody.
It covers everyone.
That, that feels really.
Inconsistent.
Well, and you're isolating.
One group.
One hundred people. I mean, none of them feels good. That feels really awful.
But one of our founding documents recognizes that all men are created equal, and yet we know through two hundred and forty-nine years of shared history, that has not always been the case.
And it sounds like the attorney, their biggest reasoning for this is to avoid the possible lawsuit somewhere down the road.
Yeah, but that's, that's what we paid them for.
I, I understand, I know that. But if you ask, but if you ask any attorney, should I cross the road? They're gonna tell you, no, you shouldn't, because they don't wanna be liable for telling you, you should've crossed the road and you had that one chance, one millionth chance, you'd get hit by a car. So, I mean, and as we, as Jason said, as we've seen, we can get sued for anything. And, you know, we, we don't, you don't know.
I think it's more than the fear, just the fear of being sued. I think it's the consistency in, uh, alignment with state policy and federal policy. There's still some federal discourse where we don't know, depending on which court you're in, what they're gonna decide to do. I mean, this is not just this particular piece. Title IX is a part of this. We didn't, I didn't bring you Title IX because Title IX wasn't changed. The districts who did change, when the new was coming, we knew not to change because we had a feeling that there was gonna be some controversy around it. So this is, this is bigger than just, just Iowa making this decision. It's the alignment of all of them, but.
But I mean, go back to our local, having our local control, and they're, they're, they're giving us that control to make these decisions because this, are the, the views of our district are gonna be different than a view of a district in Lake County, you know? So, that's also we need to look at, you know, what, what are the core values of our district?
And we're able to write policy that extends beyond, like you mentioned, the attorneys of advice. We can write policy that extends beyond. I know that a cell phone law is not the same thing as a protected class, but we can write policy that fits our district and fits the desires of our community that is in compliance with the law, too.
Then, just like with this one, I'm gonna send that to the attorneys to make sure that they can defend what we put in that policy before I even bring it to you, because I don't wanna bring something that's so far away that a parent will win, and then I should've looked at that closer to begin with. So, there's the similarity. Do we wanna go to oh five, or?
Yeah.
Six oh five, instructional program.
This just had some basic changes where you can see in green that they added, um, age-appropriate and research-based in a couple of different areas. And the units of study, there's a, uh, you'll see an edit from the red where it says three and four units, that we changed both of those to two units. And the thing to remember with instructional programming, too, is a, it's a broad, um, requirements from the state. This is, you know, there was a question in the graduation policy, we'll come to later in the agenda, that I'll reiterate that, too. But these were changes that were required to add in there to be more clear.
Do, is there a legal definition on what research-based means? Because, I mean, I was on Facebook and I did some research. And here's what I know about human growth and development.
I would have to ask an attorney if there's a legal definition of it. I know in education, we look for studies that are longitudinally.
Yes.
Done more than a year.
Peer-reviewed, and yes, scientifically sound, et cetera. And, yes, but that, for me, the concern is there's no qualifier other than research-based.
Okay.
Six oh nine.
Um, health education, this was, um, the, again, age-appropriate research. There were some items that we were taking out, um, based on IASB's recommendation. And again, this kinda goes to what I was gonna say later on, um, the graduation requirements. These are still taught, but they're not a required teaching policy. Should be what's, i- if we're, if we're saying that these are all required to be in here, that's not the case. These are something that we do teach, but we don't have to teach. So, that's why we took him out, because the recommendation is they're not in code anymore, so they shouldn't be here. Code identifies what your requirements are, so we're trying to match this with the code. There was a piece of feedback that talked about, don't take it out, um, where we share this with parents because then parents won't be able to opt out. And I just wanted to call attention to the new handbook, um, where on page twenty-seven and twenty-eight, there is a, a section on health instruction. We do have to change, cause the old one said kindergarten, but it's now grade one. And it explicitly says, individuals wishing to examine course objectives and/or instructional materials can do so by contacting the school. Parents or guardians having objections may file a written request with the building principal to exclude their student from instruction. These things have always been in place. I mean, they've been, they were in place before, two years ago, when the legislation came that we had to tell parents that, that we've always listened to a parent who has a concern about the content in a class. So, that's not gonna go away. They're still gonna have that option. And parents all have to sign off on the handbook, so they would see it in there. I will have to make a couple of updates because we put the handbook, it, it goes on for months, and we just, we knew there were gonna be a couple things to fix.
Same concerns about research-based apply here.
Six oh nine. Do you wanna ask about that?
Oh, yeah, I just, I was concerned about the, the specific exclusion now of domestic violence, HIV/AIDS, HPV, and HPV vaccine.
Well, they're not excluded from the curriculum. They're just not in code anymore. So if a parent came and said, nobody can say domestic violence is required, your student has to sit through this. They have an option to not have them sit through it, and code doesn't require them to sit through it.
So did we have this discussion about all of these terms?
Yes.
AIDS, HIV, you know, last summer or last spring?
Yeah, it was not too long ago. Yeah.
It was before. Sorry. Yeah.
So the curriculum is what's, what actually is taught in the district. I mean, that's mandated, and that's why we continue to revise the curriculum. So that, this doesn't limit what you're teaching? I mean, we went through an extensive, remember the Health Committee and the pastors and all that stuff? That, this just means it doesn't have to be in the code anymore. That doesn't mean we're not going to teach it.
But if we take it out, then there's no requirement that we do.
Code requires it. Code is law and law trumps policy, so code requires it. And if it's not in the code, it shouldn't be in the policy. It doesn't mean we can't do it, cause it's voluntary, but we can't require it in policy if it's not part of code. Chapter twelve dictates what is taught in the school. So, I mean, it would be almost like saying, cause this is a health class and those are health units. So it would be like saying, and, um, pre-calculus that you're required to teach solving three variable equations using matrices. Well, that's a very specific unit of study. We would never put that in a policy because the policy goes by code. Code tells us what math classes have to be taught. So, it wouldn't be part of a policy to outline that. We'd have five thousand pages in policy if we did that for every single content unit, which was kinda where I was gonna go with the graduation requirements, but I'll do that when it comes back up.
And then the, maybe you answered this and I missed it, but the removal of the parent notification is just because it's in the handbook, and so that's why.
We're ready for the extraordinary graduation requirements.
Is that in this one, or is that the next one? Yeah. So it's consent.
Public comment.
Oh, I'm sorry, public comment. I missed that. I just went to the highlight.
Wait, we didn't wanna talk about six oh eight?
It's an action.
It's later. It's the second reading.
Okay. Yes, so public comments. Mr. Solomon, you are up. Volume one, you're right up. Thank you for coming tonight. All the policy limits, your comments are three minutes per speaker. For confidentiality reasons, the board does not discuss specific personnel matters. We appreciate your comments. The board has a significant interest in maintaining and conforming its meetings and expects that members of the public and board will address each other with civility. The orderly process of the board meeting will not be interfered with or disrupted by a public comment. Only individuals being recognized by the board president will be allowed to speak. Comments by others are out of order. If disruptive individual, the individual causing disruption may be asked to leave the board meeting. Defamatory comments may be subject to legal action.
Mark Solomon, ninety-four forty-two, Hammett Drive. Superintendent Daca told you publicly during one of these meetings that state law requires that Urbandale accept all open-rollees. She also, she also told you that she had no position or opinion on what sports conference we choose to be in. She is misleading you again with this bond referendum, where she wants to tear down our high school softball and baseball fields and move them to the middle school. She told you we have no choice, that the city is forcing us to move our softball field out of Lyons Park. The Urbandale City Council will not support this move to Towns and Avenue. It will not support this against the residents' wishes. And the Townsend Avenue residents will fight viciously against this project, as they should. This residential neighborhood has unbelievably poor access and capacity for thousands of out-of-town cars day and night. And the residents surrounding the baseball field, Barton Field, have no desire for it to be torn down and a Metro West-like building be built in its place. In fact, very few Urbandale residents will vote to pay for a giant, expensive building that will primarily serve kids that don't live in Urbandale, particularly when it's being led by superintendent who is not popular and has bloated district spending since she arrived four years ago. Like staying in the CIML, this referendum keeps up the illusion that Urbandale is bigger than it really is. And since we put kids, put kids first, what about the girls and boys that play these sports? They will no longer be able to walk to practice after school. Instead, they'll have to drive, assuming, of course, they have a car. This certainly won't help our declining participation in these sports. So what will residents support? A scaled-back project to renovate the existing fields with artificial turf and an indoor heating facility where the pool used to be. This facility could also serve UGRA softball and Urbandale Little League, who have been begging for something like this for years. This is the type of community asset neighboring communities offer, including the CIML schools, we are expected to compete with. In a conference where our teams, again, finished in last place this summer. It would also be a fraction of the cost of the superintendent proposal and would have a chance of passing a citywide vote. Thank you.
On to the consent agenda.
Point of clarification, Madam President, before we move to item six. I just want to confirm that the board actually has the final responsibility for the district's budget, and we are the ones in charge of deciding what the district spends. Is that correct? Yes, we approve. Okay, thank you. Um, I would move to open the consent agenda.
I would like to move that we vote separately on item A from the writer. Okay, we'll pull out item eight. Is there a second? Howzer?
Any questions, discussion?
Okay.
So, we'll, um, we'll call vote, me for G.
Howzer?
Yes.
Kent?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
Manke? Ben Reisweig?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Motion passes. And then we have six eight.
Do we need a separate motion?
We don't need a separate motion. We're just gonna go ahead and, I'll go ahead and do another roll call. So, we start with Kent.
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
Manke?
Yes.
Ben Reisweig?
Yes.
Williams?
Stained due to my employer.
Young?
Yes.
And Howzer?
Yes.
That's a six one.
Okay. And on to number seven, our action items, the second reading of six thirty.
So, the graduation, um, requirements, I wanna point out a couple of things that, um, in the executive summary, it says that the updates since the first reading. I'm sorry, I think I read that wrong earlier. This is correct. This is updates, I'm so sorry. So I've been living in policy world for too long. When we did the first reading, there was some feedback on the, um, we needed the legislative update where the civics requirement, if you look at the bottom of the third page, well, two, four, the fifth page of the policy in blue, um, it outlines the civics test requirement where students will have to, by the school year starting July one of twenty-six, would be the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year, students must receive a passing score on the civics test as set forth by the Iowa Department of Education and required by relevant laws. That stays straight from the legislation. and required by relevant laws, that stays straight from the legislation. We also had some feedback from Director of Special Education for the students requiring special education. There was some language in there that was not necessary. The students, we left the last sentence saying that the graduation requirements for special education students is to complete four years of English, three math, three social studies, and three science. You might hear that called four, three, three, three. And those are the basic core classes that are the minimum. And we know that IEP teams have other decisions, so that other language was not necessary. Then since this published, there was another error noted, and again, I apologize, I do not like to send things with errors. But on the first page, when it says Urbandale diploma, the forty-six and a half is miscalculated. It should actually say forty-seven and a half. So should the board motion to pass this, you would be voting, I would need somebody to say with that correction of forty-seven and a half units. Or credits, sorry.
So I would move to approve the second reading of Policy six thirty-eight with the corrections that Dr. Daca pointed out.
Manki will second.
This is not a roll call, so all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. And we're on to the new action items. The first one's the technology buyback proposal.
So you're going to hear from me a lot tonight, I just want you to know, my team is behind me. Thank you Stephanie for representing. But this is the summer where a lot of things are happening with individuals. So Josh Whitford has put this on. This is where we take items that are outgoing computer equipment and get bids to determine where those are going to go. And he has done his due diligence and recommends that the approval of the bid go to electronic asset security. The details you can see in there, I'll try to answer questions as, as I can. But this is something that we do annually in the summer, you might remember.
Would move to approve the technology buyback proposal.
Young will second.
So all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? On to the video surveillance upgrade.
Well, you might remember from some of our concerns that have arisen over the last couple of years, the attention to the amount of video that our system records and how often it records it. We have a system that will play back, it only records when there's movement in the building. So depending on the building and depending on how much movement is happening, some buildings may record back to ninety days. Some may only go back to eighty because there's so much moving that's happening. So Mr. Whitford had an opportunity to improve our system, both the software and the hardware, by making the purchases outlined here that will allow us, depending again on that movement, we might get an entire year worth of video that we can retain. So we're still going to be asking our administrators, when they have a situation, to pull that video and archive it on their desktop so that it's there and we don't lose it, just in case. But this will allow us to gain far more recorded video than we've ever been able to do. So we had an option to buy these based, I think we bought forty-eight terabytes. There is a seventy-two terabyte proposal that we felt like was a bit of an overkill. It was considerably more money as well. So we want to go with the forty-eight. Should we find out that that's not, there's too much movement, that we're, we're still needing more, then we will look to be able to add, as I understand it, the hardware is like a slot that you put things in. So I'm sorry, I'm not technology oriented, but we can seek out additional terabytes should that be necessary. So I'm excited that we'll have that opportunity and we don't have to worry like we did before. So that's the request for this particular one. And the total amount of money exceeds what I'm allowed to approve and it's a total of thirty-nine thousand eight eighty-nine between both hardware and software.
I would move to approve the new video surveillance upgrade.
Motion, do I have a second?
Williams, second. Williams?
This one will be, they'll call.
Me?
Yes.
Manki?
Yes.
Ben Ricewig?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Howser?
Yes.
Kent?
Yes.
Motion passes, seven zero.
I'll give you a break on this.
Steve will take the copier, okay. I could do it, but I'll let him take it.
Under the Pebble budget, we have about twenty thousand dollars for copiers set aside each year. And so the high school has come to us with the need of replacing the one they have. It's quite old and getting to the point where it's getting a lot of service work done on it. So MMIT has recommended we replace it. And so what we're asking for is the approval to get a new machine. And the financial impact, I believe, is around ten thousand dollars.
This Stephenator making copies. Manki will approve the purchase of a new copier for the high school. Will move, will move to approve. I will also approve it when we get to that, but I will make the motion to approve it.
All right. Me?
Me.
All right, Manki?
Yes.
Ben Ricewig?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Howser?
Yes.
Kent?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
Motion passes, seven zero.
And the special education position.
So in our four-plus program, which for those of you who aren't familiar with it, it's a program where our specialized students qualify if they have an unmet academic, social, emotional need to continue school after their normal graduation year. In the last couple of years, we have not had students that were going into jobs that, we have a job coach position, which was at the associate level. And it's gone unfilled and we haven't had a sense of urgency, having not had the student need for it. But next year, we're going to have seven students. So there's going to be a lot more responsibility for that and a lot higher expectation. Also, the change to our career-connected learning initiative and making sure that all of our students have access to these types of experiences. We're requesting that the job position be moved from the specialized associate level to, I believe it's on the behavior tech level. And that accounts for about fifty-four cents an hour or about seven hundred fifty-six dollars a year change in the pay. This person, as far as what they're going to have to do, they're required to go to the jobs where our students are and work with the employers to make sure that they understand what the employer's expectation is so that they can work with those students. Sometimes that means that they're going to have to transfer students in our school vehicles, which is a large responsibility. They also will possibly be on call. These students might be working in the evening when the school day is already done. So we want to be able to make sure that those people can go, that person can go to the jobs when they need to. And we're restructuring the entire four-plus program so that we can better meet the needs of this specific population. So this is really a subset of our career-connected learning and the work that Darlene Wagner does. This is that special population that we are also making sure has the opportunity to have the career connected and, and earn a living and be able to go out and be productive in society. So that's our request to make that job a higher step on the pay scale.
I would move to approve the new specialized restructure position.
Manki will second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
So this next one is for, I don't usually bring these items to you in this fashion, but the urgency to get this work done prior to football season starting. I know Rachel has also volunteered in the concession with me. Some of you may have also volunteered in the concession and, and through the experience that we had, we saw a need to make some changes and improve our concession.
Experience.
Facility, experience, et cetera. Really, really pleased with the work that the Booster Club has done. We've had a meeting with them a number of times, some of the leadership in the Booster Club. Jesse Sadler from our Nutrition Services Department is assisting us. The Booster Club and Jared and I, we had a conversation about who's going to assign people to work in the concession. Who's going to clean it? Who's going to explain food safety, et cetera? And they are, like I said, being extremely collaborative with us. They've actually hired an individual whose job is going to be, the Booster Club has hired. The person's job is going to be that person to schedule people in the, in the concession, to take care of the inventory, to do the shopping, to make sure that the cleaning, et cetera, happens. One thing that we realized is to get into compliance with the highest standard of food safe certification, we can't have wooden cabinets, we can't have some of the machines that we have in there. We can't have, the coolers all had to be replaced. Cool, thank goodness Coke, they call Coke, Coke is responsible for doing that. They came out and said, what can we do for you? So it's already kind of started, we pulled everything out, we cleaned it. They, I won't say we, because I had nothing to do with that part. Our staff did. It's going to be painted, there's going to be a protective flooring going in. The amount of money that we've put here is way higher than what we are actually thinking we're going to need. But on the other hand, too, we didn't know what kinds of plumbing issues we might run into, what kind of air conditioning, because I don't know if you're aware, the other side has also a similar makeup of concession that's going to, for now, turn into kind of a storage so you can actually move around in there and you don't have all the drinks piled up and everything. But that might need to have like a split unit air conditioning because you can't just throw things in there in nine hundred degrees in the summer and expect them to stay. So Brian is the gentleman who is going to be doing that work and he's given me a list. They're going to replace all of the wooden cabinetry with stainless steel countertops with storage on the bottom that meet appropriate health criteria. So there's some new machinery being purchased, like a popcorn machine and a hamburger heating unit that sits on a counter. All those typical things, there'll be a new menu. Coke is going to help us get that branded up. We're going to put branding in the building so that it's something that's more appealing. I think we're, their ideas are really going to take this to a level that other schools are going to wish that they could do. But it's important to do. And then we also know that there's still work that is going to probably have to be done in the inside concession where, by the PAC. Not sure what the softball and baseball is, we don't want to put money until we know what that's, what that will end up being because I don't want to throw money away either. So that's why we're looking at the electrical, plumbing, painting, cleaning, and the new equipment. We don't know what that's going to be, so I kind of went high. And Steve ensured that we can do that. But again, we're going for as economical as possible.
Yeah, worked rounds in the Pebble funds where they were and have set aside that one twenty-five.
I just had one question on, do these plans include any sort of a point-of-sale or inventory software either now or in the future? Would that fall on us or Booster Club or?
It would, it would be something that we would work with the Booster Club with. I think these, my logic in supporting us purchasing and doing this work is, one day if the Booster Club said, you know what, I don't want to do that anymore, we're still going to need a concession. So I want to be in a position that I don't have to rush out and try to make those things up. But they're more than willing to have those conversations. We do, I don't remember what the unit is called, but there's a handheld device that we do take electronic payments. So it's very, I thought it was easy to use.
But from a ease of a volunteer stepping in to use and tracking how much things cost.
Having only two of them that you're allowing to pass, pack and pour.
That could be true.
And my kids being like, no Skittles, no, actually sour punch, yeah.
Well, I know Jared has worked with Bound. Bound is the new company you might have seen in our weekly update that our new calendar will come out of. And I don't know if you've had a chance to click in, but it is so much better. They have a new system at the ticket level. So down the road, when we can get the building in line and, and be in that place to be a good place, that's something we have to look at. I, I mean, if we're going to, they're going to continue to employ somebody who's doing that work, it would be a lot easier to run a system like that where inventory can be kept. I don't want to say we're going to do it right this minute, but it would definitely be something to look at down the line.
This new guy might have his own system too that he's interested in.
I apologize for not thinking about this sooner, but as somebody who has stood there facing west during the marching Invitational and other events.
It's hot.
It's hot. And I'm wondering, is, would there, is there money in this framework to look at something like an awning over the two windows to kind of just give us a little bit more?
That's a good idea.
Shake protection.
Even when it's not hot, it's windy.
Yeah.
And they are also looking at a split unit being put in there as well. Because it is, I mean, you're right, I did it during track and it was nice outside, but not in, not when that sun.
When that sun, yeah, two, three o'clock in the afternoon, it's brutal.
Yeah, we can, we can add that to the wishlist and if it can fit in. But the split unit should help keep the rest of the inside at a, at an acceptable level. And you're probably pushing even further west because we're taking out the coolers. You have to bend over to get to the window. You'll actually be right at the window because we're using the, we've asked for more vertical coolers. So that's a good point.
Bending over the coolers is really good exercise for the lower back, so.
Yeah.
Not mine.
You dunk your head in there when you get hot.
Right, yeah.
Um, this is a significant expense and it sounds like the work is already started and already happening. And so I, I'm concerned, I mean, because that concession, the field is not that old. It's not that much older than the high school. And our kitchen, I mean, what, what do we need to do differently so we aren't, I don't know how many years we're in now and in the same boat and having to plunk this kind of money into a concession scheme? Because that's not really where I want to spend a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, so.
We need to get the materials that meet safe serve, that meet the health department's guidelines, which should not have ever been put in there.
Right.
So having that equipment in there, that's the right equipment to start with, we shouldn't have to.
Right.
It would be an annual, roll those out, clean it.
Yeah.
And that's it.
Right. But I mean, we're making the argument there, but we don't have that in all of our concessions. So we don't, we, we aren't, I mean, we aren't meeting food safety in two other concessions that we currently have. So, I mean, it just, it, I just want to be cautious and careful about us spending this kind of money when we have a lot of facility questions at hand.
Are you talking about softball, baseball?
Yeah.
Because those are two where Jesse came over recently and walked through those with us. And there's not a lot that has to change there. We need to take the wood out, yes, so we can put in stainless steel. That's the, probably the biggest thing. We've already addressed the, the grill component of that and had a solution, an alternative solution that would meet food safety. Like we, we have to temp food, that we're not temping the food for. The concession that's inside the PAC, aside from removing some wooden units and replacing again with stainless steel, it's not nearly as bad as the football field. The football is, it's almost impossible to get around in there when you have six people in there.
I worked in there too, yeah.
So that's the most urgent and that's the, the biggest. So the baseball softball, if we go into another season there, which likely we are because of the timing, those things can happen as well. If this, if we don't use all of this to do that one, we could come back and ask you to modify and let us put it into the other places.
Yeah.
I mean, just like the three-part, the three, I don't remember, was it three bucket sink?
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, you're supposed to have.
One to clean, one to dry.
Clean, a sanitize, and a, and a rinse, which we were able to get into the baseball field the way that it's already set up. We were able to put some signage in there that would get us through to that. So she also said that at the point, if someone did ask you, the health department would be satisfied knowing what our plan was already. So it's a work in progress, they understand can't be done right away. But the football one is the most urgent.
Yeah. So I guess, maybe I'm not articulating this well, I just want to protect our investment. You know, and I, and what, making sure, I appreciate that the Booster Club is on board and they're hiring somebody, but like, we've got to have it so we don't have to do this again, so.
And that's why the items that are being chosen, Jesse is an excellent person with the knowledge to help us do that so that we're not purchasing things that in a year aren't going to be any good.
Right. Steve, did you say Pebble funding or did, so that couldn't be? Right. Steve, did you say Pebble funding, or did, so that couldn't be used for uniforms and other things like that either, facilities? Did we get the air conditioning at the baseball concessions taken care of on a?
I found out about it when the last game had already happened, so that will be taken care of before next year for sure. That could have been, I wish I knew about it, because we could have solved that pretty quickly. I think it's worth, again, the Booster Club has really got a very different viewpoint toward their relationship with the District Activities Department. So, I think we're gonna see a lot of collaboration between the two. We still have a lot of work to do on many things. This is just the first, first of many to get going.
And that, I mean, Frereks itself, the concession stand is what, twenty years old?
At least.
And I mean, I don't know.
I mean, the football field was already, was there.
Was there, right, yeah.
And so, it's been reconditioned, but I don't know how old that concession stand is. It, it could be up to forty years old. It could be structured.
But we have to remember that's not just the football.
Right.
Oh, it's track.
It's track, marching band, it's, yeah.
No, by the time that it was finished, and then, and that part of the building was the last part as far as expenditures. And things, I'd say if they could cut costs there, they would have given how that went at the end.
I also think food safety regulations have changed in the last twenty years.
Well, and I'm not sure we ever met them.
I don't think most concession stands you ever see. No. Nobody.
No, I'm, we're probably just lucky that nobody goes.
Well, it seems kind of hypothetical maybe of us to be offering that Safe Serve certification to our students and then not following it everywhere along the case, right? I mean, we can't.
And we have students that are also working there, so
Yeah.
we're raising smarter kids, and we do want to be consistent with what they are learning.
Could I move to approve the concession remodel?
Young will second.
And another one will call.
Ben Rice Wyke?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Howser?
Yes.
Kent?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
Menke?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you. On to the lease agreement with the city of Urban Dale.
So, there's two lease agreements there. One is for the softball fields at Lions Park, and the other is for the tennis courts at Walker Johnson Park. We've, we have talked about how long we have in Lions Park. Verbally, we feel like at least four years, but the leases are in two-year increments, so that's what's presented to us, and we know we need at least two years, so that's what we're proposing. These leases went from the city's attorney to our attorney and back and forth a couple of times, and they both agree on what you see in the agenda. So, we're asking to have both of these renewed for the two years, and we'll share them with the city. I believe they're taking them to City Council tomorrow night. If the board approves it, if they do not approve it, then I would have to come up with an alternative that I don't have right now for either one.
I would move to approve the twenty-eighty, or the lease agreements with the city for Walker Johnson and the softball field.
Menke will second.
Williams?
Abstained.
Young?
Yes.
Howser?
Yes.
Kent?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
Menke?
Yes.
Ben Rice Wyke?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero with one extension.
Thank you. And the twenty-eighty area with the SRO.
So, this was earlier in the agenda. There was an item for the Allers Firm conflict letter that, under the consent agenda, this is a twenty-eighty that Allers has reviewed as well as Dickinson, Bradshaw, Melissa Schilling as an independent attorney, because Allers has some, some representation for the city, depending on what the item is that we're asking to have reviewed. But this was required because we were adding an SRO at the middle school, you might remember, approving a few months back. And this brought up to date both the high school and the middle school. So, there is the contingency in there. I asked Chief Johansson to put in for the SRO to spend time unplanned so that there's not a pattern of where somebody can say, well, I know he's over there every Tuesday at nine, that he does walk throughs through the elementary schools as well. So, that is a component that will be part of that job expectation.
Move to approve the SRO lease agreement.
Twenty-eighty.
Twenty-eighty, there we go. For the SRO with the city of Urban Dale.
Me will second. We're up to Young.
Yes.
Howser?
Yes.
Kent?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
Menke?
Yes.
Ben Rice Wyke?
Yes.
Williams?
Abstained.
Motion passes six zero with one extension.
And I would move to approve the administrators on the Teacher Quality Committee for the next school year.
Me will second.
This is an easy one. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
We'd move to adjourn.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.